Large map with some different colors on it, green, blue and yellow. And that is an overall four mile greenway map. I'll touch on that a little bit in one of the slides. And a few other maps in there that we'll touch on as we go forward, just so you guys can have some visual. Is that me making that? Do you want me to keep going or wait until we get on? Okay. All right. So I thought we would start off with just a little overview of kind of where we're talking about here with the Four Mile Creek watershed. So kind of start on the bigger picture there and then we'll zoom in on that lower greenway area. So the Four Mile Creek watershed starts up in Slater and runs all the way down through Des Moines and down to the Des Moines River. So Ankeny's included in there along with a few other cities. It's about 76,000 acres in total, about close to half urban, half ag. So you do have both those components within the Four Mile Creek watershed. It's about 80,000 people, so it's a relatively heavily populated watershed there. And then it has a long history of flooding and we'll touch on that in a few slides. So in order to kind of better manage the Four Mile Creek watershed, a Four Mile Creek Watershed Management Authority, or WMA, was created in 2012. What a WMA is, is this 2080 agreement between the various cities, counties and soil and water conservation districts that are within that watershed. They're really working together to try to better the watershed, tackle some of the concerns within the watershed, flooding, water quality, all those different concerns, and really working in a joint effort. City Des Moines is involved in that along with the other jurisdictions within that watershed. They've done quite a bit of work on the Four Mile Creek watershed, looking at the various elements. They completed a watershed study in 2013, which looked at how kind of the water flowed across the landscape. They completed a watershed management plan, touching a lot on flood resiliency and water quality. And within that watershed management plan, actually creating a greenway was one of the goals there, one of the major goals. And then finally, they did a lower greenway master plan in 2017, which again zoomed kind of more in on that lower greenway that we're going to talk about today. Oh, go ahead.
Four circles in this. One, two, three, four circles. Can you just?
In the plan there. Yep, so those are hubs that are highlighted. This plan was complete by Snyder and Associates and it kind of looked at more of a bigger picture. We honed in a little bit more on exactly what was going to go on the landscape. So this is definitely a high level planning document here on your right you see with the map. Those circles were envisioned to be hubs where different, like maybe businesses would be, recreational elements, different stuff like that. This plan again is 2017, so it's a little outdated and there's been some changes from them, but that was the overall vision of those circles there on that map that you see.
Thank you.
Yep. The city limits.
Yeah, like, is that all, is that just the Des Moines portion of it? But it goes up?
So that's zoomed in a little more than just the Des Moines, or zoomed out, sorry. There's more than just Des Moines in there. There's some unincorporated Polk County on that map itself.
To?
Towards the north.
Yeah.
Yep. And I can't remember, you can see, yep, it's a little north, that map goes a little bit north of I-80 there.
Okay.
So kind of up by the Berwick area.
Thank you.
Yep, and I'll have a better map coming up too. So I mentioned the flooding a little bit. So as we all remember, in June, June 30th, 2018 was a pretty intense flood here in Four Mile Creek. It was the highest crest on record, so it's about 17.5 feet. Five to 10 inches or so fell between overnight between Ankeny and Des Moines and it all just kind of came right down to Des Moines there. So you can see some of those photos, but I will mention, you know, this flood was really bad, but we, we've had about the top five highest crests within this watershed in the last 26 years. So we've had some very frequent flood events within the last even 20 years within this watershed that have really devastated this area. And that's really what kicked off a lot of the work that City of Des Moines is doing and now Polk County Conservation is really response to these floods, going and assisting those residents, offering them buyouts, trying to make it more safe because Four Mile's going to continue to flood. It's inevitable. And so if we can allow it to flood and it's kind of more natural state in a safe way without having to go rescue residents and have damage to homes and stuff, then I think that that's really the main goal here. And so was, this was a big flood event that really is in response, a lot of our work was in response to.
How many homes do we have left? I don't know if you know that, at least in the Des Moines area that are still left that didn't take the buyout that were offered.
So we have about four, which I'll touch on, that are kind of more strategic, like right in this area, properties. Our goal, and I'll touch on the next slide here, our goal is to get all the houses within the 500-year floodplain. I'm not sure exactly how many residents are left within the entirety of the 500-year floodplain unfortunately. I don't know if anyone else kind of, but we do have about four very strategic that are kind of right in that area that's also major flooding.
In the city of Des Moines, not in incorporated?
Yep, in the city of Des Moines. And I'll touch on those and kind of towards the end of the presentation, we'll highlight those. But, so because of the response to those, that flooding, about 300-plus residential and commercial structures have been bought out since 1993. So not just in response to that 2018 flood, but also response to some of those flood events that I mentioned before that. That's been a conceded effort between the city of Des Moines, using a lot of state, federal, local funding to be able to offer those buyouts to those residents. Like I mentioned, some of those residents haven't accepted the buyouts and we'll touch on a little bit of those. But 300 structures have been bought out within the Four Mile Creek Greenway.
Can I just ask a question as far as the development of upstream?
Yeah.
How much, yeah, we know we've had big events, but since so much has been concentrated in the last 25 years, what is the comparison to the weather, to the development and what they're doing upstream?
Yeah, I think that's a major issue. I think that plays into it quite a bit. You know, unfortunately, as we all know, we don't have control of what they do upstream, but I do think that that does play into it. There's a lot of factors though, of course, just the increased rainfall is going to, no matter what kind of development we see, we're going to see those increased events. But development definitely plays into it, which is why I think it's so important to look at those different ordinances to help protect that watershed as we're developing.
Yeah, that's another aspect.
Yep.
I don't know if you're going to touch on that, but?
I didn't plan on touching that as much, but I can if you'd like, but?
Only because I don't live far from there?
Yeah.
I've been there for a longer than 25 years.
Yes, yes, exactly. Great question. So 500-year floodplain is kind of the goal of Four Mile Creek Greenway to try to acquire all the properties within that and really protect that 500-year floodplain. The reasoning for that is that can kind of account for some of those. We know as we go with more storm events, they're going to get more intense, so that can account for that a little bit instead of just going the 100-year floodplain. It allows us to get near the tributaries a little bit and really kind of account for some of those major flood events that are going to come, maybe more than 500 years like it's planned. So originally, the city of Des Moines worked on all the buyouts and continues to work on the buyouts. And then, you know, it was kind of a question of, okay, what do we do now? We have all these vacant properties, all these vacant streets, what do we do? Rich was approached, our director here, and asked, you know, would it be something that Polk County Conservation is interested in? We're used to managing floodplains, restoring floodplains. We were mendable to it and agreed and thought it'd be a great project. And so now all those parcels have been deeded over to Polk County Conservation to maintain and manage and own. So now we own about 800 acres there in the Four Mile Creek Greenway. Not all of it's in the city of Des Moines, but a vast majority is. It's our third largest Polk County Conservation Park here that we manage within the city. And then also, we're looking at, you know, of course, we're always looking into the future. What does this look like? We'd love to expand this greenway all the way up to Slater if we could someday. So there are some additional properties that we have acquired north of Ankeny. So just hopefully we can continue to piece that puzzle together and, you know, very long term, make this a really neat greenway project throughout the whole county there and runs the length of Four Mile. And you do have a map. I did pass out a map of this thing you see on your screen here. That goes to show the different ownership within the greenway right now. The big property on the north, that's just around Berwick. It's about Malleys, around Malleys Park that we owned previously. So that's unincorporated Polk County there. And then down to the south, the further south property there you see in green is Sleepy Hollow. Everything in green is owned by Polk County Conservation. The bluish color is owned by City of Des Moines and then the yellow color is owned by Pleasant Hill. So as you can see, it's a really nice partnership that we have going through this greenway with a lot of elements. So now I wanted to touch on a little bit, since we got those parcels in 2019, what we've been doing. So what it looks like now and then also what the city of Des Moines has been doing, which I'm sure you guys are all, are already familiar with. We've been installing a lot of wetlands. So we have three stormwater wetlands installed with partnership with various organizations. Now, these wetlands really help manage that stormwater that's running across, so they help with that flooding aspect and then also the water quality aspect. So like I said, we have about three of those built right now with a few more planned. They also provide habitat benefits too, along with those flooding and water quality benefits. The one here that you see before and after drone image, that is along the old 35th Street. So it's just south, basically southeast of Reno Dog Park there. So that's where that newer, that's our newest one there that, we're still trying to establish the prairie around it, but it's looking pretty good this year. This is the northernmost property that we own, minus the ones north of Ankeny. This is called Trails and Wildlife Area. This was a large project that we, that we did, it's actually a mitigation bank. We did the mitigation bank route because we really wanted to get a good quality restoration. It has six wetland basins. It actually provides 330 acre feet of flood storage on this property. So we have Four Mile Creek that runs through the middle of it and then two tributaries that cut through. And we're really wanting to allow that water to spill out of those creeks and stay on that landscape so we can reduce the water that then comes down to the city of Des Moines proper area down there. So a really neat project that just finished up. We've been doing a lot of forest improvement. We have over 150 acres that we've done. You can see the photo on the left there, my left, I guess, that might be your guys' right. You can see the difference between when we go through and actually clear the woods versus where we didn't clear the woods. This allows for some water quality and actually can allow for some flood benefits as well because it's really increasing the ability of the soil underneath of the woodland to soak up the water instead of it just running across. So it's really improving that and long, it actually, I think it looks more beautiful when it's a little more open. So we're working on a lot of the timber down there along Four Mile Creek. We've done some native prairie restoration, which is kind of like our bread and butter here. We love restoring prairie and we've done, done a lot of it. So we've done about 35 acres here in Four Mile Creek so far and we have a lot more planned. You can see here on these photos, the photo in the upper area of the slide was about from 97, I believe. You can see that same fire hydrant, so there was a house there, that's a Google image. And then you can see the photo down there, that's before we, the one that kind of looks like everything's dead, that's before we went in and restored. And then the one with the prairie is about two years later. That's last summer, what that prairie looked like there along, and this is along Jefferson, just north of Jefferson, between Jefferson and Mattern there. So really nice prairie restoration. And here's a drone image of it, so you can see those streets there, that's Mattern and Jefferson on either side. We had a lot of conversations with the neighborhoods in this area about the prairie because it does look very rough at first. It looks like a bunch of weeds, you know, it doesn't look the best for the first few years. So we had a lot of conversations with the residents and, you know, they weren't, they didn't love it at first because it didn't look amazing, but now we've had some really good feedback and some really good conversations from the neighborhoods here on how much they love walking through this prairie. We've done some oxbow restorations, we've restored two of them in partnership with Polk County Public Works. These are right along Four Mile, kind of in that same area that I've been talking about around Jefferson. We have 13 other areas identified. These oxbows can provide flood benefits as well as water quality benefits and habitat. So again, trying to hit all those different areas as we're working through this restoration.
Is that the trail that's just right on the edge of the photo?
Yes, that is Four Mile Drive. That's the old Four Mile Drive actually. So that's kind of a trail and I'll touch on that, that's not the Gailey Wilson Trail. This is just, this one in particular is just on kind of the west, south, southwest side of the old Four Mile Drive that's now been partially removed. And I'll point it out in a map when we talk about those road removals. Done some stream bank restoration, a little over 8,000 feet so far. Four Mile Creek, as you can imagine, is really enlarged, which basically means it's really eroding on those banks, causing a lot of water quality issues. So we've done some stream bank restoration, have about 20,000 more planned, a lot of it's up in that Trails and Wildlife Area to the north, but some planned along Four Mile Creek itself, kind of down further in the city of Des Moines as well. Wanted to touch on a cool project. This is a stream bank restoration that was actually done with City of Des Moines staff, so the Public Works Department actually did the stream bank restoration and it looks really, really nice. It was done to protect some infrastructure. The Gailey Wilson Trail is right there in the photo, you can see it there. So this is right along Williams Street Bridge, kind of close to that Williams Street Bridge, but it looks really nice done by the city of Des Moines. This is what we call Sheridan Ravine. So this was the most recent project we've done. This is a drainage ditch that runs just north of Sheridan Avenue. It drains about 500 acres, it's an open ditch. We got a lot of concerns from residents that live along it by the looks of it, but then also, or because of the looks of it, but then also because of the issues with water quality it was, it was causing. This ditch also, you see the before picture, it used to spill out of its banks quite a bit when flooding would happen, or when we get heavy rain events. And so residents were seeing some issues that lived right along this ditch. So we went through and restored it, made it look a little more like a natural stream, created what we call floodplain benches to really kind of slow down that water, allow it some area to spill out. And I have another after, before and after photo here. After the rain event that occurred this spring where we saw Four Mile Creek get pretty high, it wasn't necessarily out of its banks everywhere. I talked to a few of the residents in this area and they were very happy with the fact that the water actually stayed within the limits of the ditch. So it did not get out of the ditch and go into their property like it would have in previous storms. So it functioned like it should, we were a little nervous because I just got done with that much water going through it, but this is a really nice project that manages a lot of water and allows it to kind of slow down and get some of those water quality benefits too. Along with this drainage ditch project, we did add what's called an off-channel wetland. So this wetland is connected to that drainage ditch that I just showed a picture of. This will provide more flood storage, so water will be allowed to back out of that drainage ditch and into this wetland, and then also some water quality benefits as well. And just one more photo there of kind of what it looks like now with that drainage ditch, trying to get that prairie established. We've done some road removals. So as you can imagine, with all of the residents that were removed from this area, we had a lot of abandoned streets and yards that had been mowed that were no longer mowed. So we worked with the city of Des Moines to create a road removals plan, so essentially removing the roads that we don't need anymore. These two maps here on this slide, the one with the green and the blue that was created by an engineer, those split it up into two different phases. So one of the reasons that we had to split it into two different phases is because we had some of those residents that didn't accept those buyouts, we couldn't remove those roads yet because they were still needed. And so the green color there is the phase two that has not been done yet. Everything in blue on that map has been done. So as we were going through and having public meetings about this road removal project, we started hearing from residents in the area that they really liked using these roads to walk on. They, they were kind of upset they were going to be moved because they wanted to walk on these roads. So the other map you see there with the kind of the golden color and the green, we heard a lot down there by the Jefferson area, they were using those roads quite a bit. And so we decided, well, let's leave partial, let's leave partial removals. Let's just remove half the road and leave the rest and create kind of a loop system that these residents can use and actually walk through this new native prairie that we restored, or some of the woodlands we restored. So you'll see there that we are only removing part of some of those roads there, it will create a loop system. Four Mile Drive has been removed already and I'll have a photo of that on the next slide, I believe. Yep. So you can see here, this is Four Mile Drive right at the Williams, we're teed into Williams there. You see we have a partial removal on the road there and it'll create that trail and we'll maintain that as a trail. Right now it ends, it will connect into the Gailey Wilson eventually, just not yet. We're working on that with another project across the street, or City of Des Moines and Polk County Conservation's working on that. So a nice addition for the neighborhood, it'll create about a mile loop trail down there that they'll be able to utilize. North of Easton, you saw we didn't leave any partial removals there, we're going to be doing more of a soft trail network, so we'll be mowing some trails throughout the prairie that they can use. So just different kind of elements that they can use. They can do a soft trail or kind of, you know, more of a mowed trail and then also the more of the hard surface trail south of, of Easton there. To touch a little bit more on the recreational side, we do have a mountain bike park that's being installed or worked on right now, north of Copper Creek Lake on a property that we, we own now. And that is currently in construction phase, anticipated to be done, not until next year. We do have a parking lot element. You can see in that photo, it's kind of the pink little area that's called out, that is that parking lot that's just northwest of Copper Creek Lake right now. It's a little bit rough shape, but we're going to be putting a full parking lot in there with lighting, paving it, having a restroom. And then also that's where that Four Mile Drive will connect down to that Gailey Wilson. So that'll be a cool project there to really improve that parking lot for the mountain bike, but then also for other users within the Four Mile Creek Greenway. Of course, we have City of Des Moines parks within the greenway too. This is really a partnership effort. How we see it is, you know, Polk County Conservation works on more of the natural resource restoration efforts and then Des Moines has the great parks that we can use that people can recreate on. So this map shows all of the areas that City of Des Moines Parks will continue to own and maintain. You have your Sergeant Park there, the Reno Dog Park and then the little Pocket Park, the Gailey Wilson Trail, they do, you guys do maintain this throughout this area and then Four Mile Creek Community Center as well, is a really nice hub for this area that can provide a lot of benefits to the users within the Four Mile Creek Greenway. And finally, to hit on one last recreational element, we are working on water trails within partnership with Des Moines. One of the big locations is there by the Four Mile Creek Community Center, trying to find some grant funding to get that one installed. This is part of that, of course, more regional effort that Icon is working on of getting some of those water trails and access to Four Mile Creek if we can, to get people interact with the water. You guys already have a great one there at Sergeant Park that gets used quite a bit, so we're trying to expand that a little more. All right. So finally, I'm going to touch a little bit now on what the next steps and what the future looks like for Four Mile Creek Greenway. Are there any questions about what's been done? Okay. So you have this map in front of you as well. This is zoomed more in on kind of that, what we call is more like the catalyst area where we're doing quite a bit of work within the Four Mile Creek Greenway. This is the area around Jefferson, the Four Mile Creek Community Center's there. I put this map in here because we did a lot of internal planning. We went and looked at every single piece of ground, we said, what's there now? What do we want to be there in terms of natural resource restoration? So this map, all the hatched lines there show areas that have been complete or are in the process of being complete in terms of natural resource restoration. So you see some of those oxbow locations that we talked about are in there. And so that's kind of just to show you where we're going with our restoration. As you can see in our next big area that we're looking at, there's a solid green area just south of Jefferson. And that's going to be a prairie restoration, that's kind of our next steps. And we'll talk a little more about that when we're talking about some of the acquisitions that still potentially need to occur there, but that we've been holding off because there are still some private landowners within that area. I wanted to just put this back up there, just a reminder of the road removals because I'm going to talk about phase two. So we do have it in two phases and this is kind of what those maps look like there. So phase two, again, reminders that everything in green, and actually it may change a little bit depending on acquisitions, but right now phase two is everything in green there on the, on the kind of more grayscale map.
Quick question, it's four property owners who, who haven't agreed yet to?
I believe it's four, yes. At least strategic.
Are they, are those active or are we getting closer or is just putting that on the shelf or?
Yes, and I'll touch on those. I have a few slides, in a few slides, about three slides, I'll touch on those and we can talk about a little bit more where they're at if you don't mind. Okay, thank you. I just put this back up here too, just to kind of zoom in on where we're trying to create that connection with that loop trail with removals. So once we get phase two done, we'll actually be able to create that loop. Right now, it's not, it's not a loop, there's just kind of some dead end trails there that can be utilized. So here's the slide that highlights a little more zoomed in with the road removals. The air, the properties in purple are the ones that are still needing to be acquired or privately ownership. Everything in the blue is owned by Polk County Conservation and then the yellow is owned by City of Des Moines, under the understanding that it's likely going to be coming over to the Polk County Conservation through that 2080 we have with you guys. So we'll talk a little bit more about each of these purple properties. I'll zoom in a little bit and we can talk a little bit more about each of them. So these two properties, the one along Mattern there, kind of the longer property, isn't quite, I mean, we'd love to get it because it's within the 500-year floodplain, but they do have access off Mattern and right now Mattern is not slotted to get removed. So it's not as a priority, I guess, of an acquisition, so there haven't really been a lot of conversations with that landowner there. The one on the south there that accesses Jefferson, there has been conversations with him. Real estate is having those conversations, City of Des Moines. And they, they're going a little bit slower, but still they're happening with those conversations. He has been approached and there are conversations going on with him. These two properties here, they have access there, it's Williams Street, it's not written out, but it's the green there. We'd love to get those properties because we'd like to be able to remove Williams Street there. They do not have access to the property off Mattern right now, so they would have to be relocated in order to be able to remove that street. And I can't remember, are we having conversations with them yet? Okay, we have not had conversations with them yet. And I'm sorry, by we, I mean City of Des Moines, has not had conversations with that property owner yet about relocating, offering them any sort of buyout. This property here is a very high priority acquisition. It's kind of right in the middle of areas that we'd love to restore. They have access off of Jefferson, which again, we'd love to remove Jefferson, it has that partial removal. I believe this property owner has been approached once, but it kind of tabled and didn't really have more of a discussion after the one time they were approached, but we would love, this is kind of our number one priority, we'd love to kind of talk to them a little bit more, because I do believe they were approached one time, right? Yes.
What, I mean, is there a house there?
No, so there, this is a little more difficult of an acquisition in that there is no structures on the property. They just have, they run their business out of this property. So there's just a lot of debris, they're a tree removal company, so there's a lot of debris on site, their trees, all that kind of stuff, they have like some equipment on site, but there is no structures. So ultimately, you know, unfortunately, their, their buyout offer will not be super lucrative, I guess, for them. It may be that, that kind of thing. So I think that that's a part of the conversation that needs to be had, is, is how do you approach them? But yes, they're a little different in that there is no structure on site.
And it's zoned or grandfathered for the business, right?
Right. And all these properties I will mention are within the floodway. They're zoned as F, so floodway.
Yeah, yeah. Did they all have damage during 2018, all four of these properties?
Yes.
Significant damage?
Yes. As far as I am, no, I mean, I think.
Well, it doesn't have a structure on it, so I mean, it's.
In the flood, the logs that were in this property went
Yep.
all over the, the area and then the city had to come and clean them out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Is contributing and damaging other properties?
Cause a potential harm.
Right.
And I will mention about this property, there were some major issues with encroachment on Polk County Conservation land for a long time and causing damage to our new prairie plantings. We did approach them and ask them if they would discontinue that, that effort and clean up all of the logs that were on our property and they, they did do that for us. So they kind of bucked it at first, but they, they did end up cleaning that for us and regrading it. So we do see, still see some encroachment issues from them as well as them kind of driving through areas that they shouldn't be driving through to access different parts of their property. So I will also mention, you know, some other areas where we're talking about the road removals, which these acquisitions, you know, need to happen first and then the road removals happen. We do have a lot of issues with the roads still being left in within this area, a lot of dumping occurs, large appliances, tires, all that sort of thing.[1699.41] thing. We get some off-roading, so some people, you know, like to joyride on these roads, and then they'll cut off and kind of go through the prairie and cause some damage there. And unfortunately, it just doesn't feel as much like a park when you have these areas going, going through it. So it's hard for us to get a lot of neighborhood support, and people getting really excited when maybe it doesn't look as good as it could, because we have, you know, these abandoned streets that maybe have some dumping. And we have a great partnership with the City of Des Moines Public Works. They come in and clean a lot of that dumping up for us, and then our staff helps as well. So, and then, you know, the roads continue to have to be maintained by City of Des Moines Public Works as well. So I think in terms of next steps, it'd be great if we could, or City of Des Moines could approach these property owners and really help keep those restoration efforts continuing and get those, those roads out if we can.
Can we help them find an alternative location?
So, yep, I believe the city staff has been exploring that option. Yep. And that's all I have for you today. I'm happy to take any more questions in related to the Greenway or those acquisitions, if you'd like.
So I've heard it said, maybe you can verify this, that the Four Mile Creek Watershed is the third largest watershed in Polk County.
The, the third largest active, yes, like Watershed Management Authority and stuff like that. I think Beaver Creek is a little, is much bigger. But yeah, it's, it's close to, it's probably the third, if not the fourth, yep.
I just want to do a shout out to Amanda Rich. Patrick Bean from the city is the stormwater management person, but I also sit on the Four Mile Creek Watershed Authority, and what a great, great committee to sit on and all the work that has been done. And you can just see the transformation of everything that you've done, and you've done it. It's all been done correctly. I love the OXPOS and the additional basins. I think on tonight's agenda, we're approving a grant. One of the water quality gauges will be, continue to be here at Four Mile. But all that's been done is just amazing. So, thank you. We have a jewel. It is truly a jewel on the east side, and I don't think every resident realizes how lucky we are to sit in an 800-acre park, right there in the middle of the city. So great job. And I know you're out there all the time. So wonderful job. We're trying to be as responsive as we can to neighbors. We do have some trouble with four-wheelers, but we have a Ranger now that is stationed at...
Sleepy Hollow.
Sleepy Hollow, rather than Thomas Mitchell. So when we need him, it is patrolled by a Ranger. So thank you very much.
No, and I would say thank you to all of you, because honestly, we couldn't do a lot of this without city council support. So thank you very much for, for all of your support with this project.
And the Four Mile Creek Mountain Bike area, so it will be this time next year before it's open, or is it partially open and no restrooms, or what's the status of?
It'll be next year, I believe, spring, correct? Yep. So spring 2025, we're planning kind of a grand opening type for that, that park there. I mean, it is public, so people can go walk the property if they'd like right now, but if, in terms of the mountain bike park, it'll be next spring that'll open with the parking lot complete.
A parking lot and the restrooms, or just the park?
Yes, I believe. I'm not sure on the restroom status. Adam, our park planner, is working on that. So I guess I'm not quite sure on that status, but I know the, the grandiose ideal plan would be that they would be at the same time, but I guess I'm not sure on that status there. I know Adam is working diligently with the City of Des Moines on that restroom install.
Is it the same type of restroom that you have at Easter Lake, or is it full? Kind of like how required other parts of their city to have?
I am not sure.
I'm looking at Rich, because he knows probably what I'm talking about.
I'll let you come up here, Rich.
Thank you, and we don't know yet. That's a great question. But yeah, the challenge here is that it is a floodplain. And so there are certain restrictions that come with a floodplain, and to move it out of the floodplain then makes it inaccessible from that parking area. So we're working with the City of Des Moines, which actually, the whole mountain bike park is in the City of Des Moines. But right across that little bridge is the City of Pleasant Hill.
Right.
So we're looking at different options, working with Des Moines and Pleasant Hill to see what the best use is. We know the parking lot's going in there. We're not quite sure where the bathroom is going to go yet.
So you're saying the bathrooms like we have at Easter Lake wouldn't, wouldn't work because it's in a floodplain?
The pit toilets that we have, they wouldn't. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the extension, too, not only of the mountain, but the Sleepy Hollow and all the amenities that will be coming with it. So it'll be a great attraction for the east side.
Well, thank you. And my contact information is up there if you guys have any more questions. Thank you.
On to the next mayor.
On to the next one.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that. The one map that was provided to council, I'll show you here, does show that between 20 to 30 additional properties, they do not all have houses on them, and the city budget's about $400,000 a year for acquisition. So we were able to get three or four of those a year. So we'll, we'll continue to make progress in that regard. I believe Cody's coming up for our second presentation. So council is aware that we have a housing strategy discussion that has just gotten underway, and as part of those discussions, we are going to need to be able to provide, council will need to help provide input as to some of the tools that are available to, to us. And we thought it'd be helpful to bring back to you some data on the urban revitalization areas that have tax abatement utilized. Understand that over the next three to four months, with that housing strategy discussion, we will come back to you for input on, on any potential changes, recommendations to changes to the abatement program. But we, we thought it would be helpful to provide an update on the data first, so I've asked Cody to do that. All yours, Cody.
All right. Scott, thanks for the introduction here. Mayor and members of council, good morning. Here to talk about the urban revitalization program, which like Scott, Scott has mentioned, this, this plan is something that's implemented by the Development Services Department. And we'll go ahead and jump into it here. Little background, just what, what is urban revitalization, much widely and much more commonly known as tax abatement. I'll refer to it as tax abatement here for the rest of this presentation. If you're talking to anybody in the public and you mention urban revitalization, they probably wouldn't know what it is. So we usually just use tax abatement. And that's what you see on our webpage, and we try and make, make our plan as easy to understand as possible, because we find that that's, that makes it more effective. This, this started back in 1979, when the Iowa Legislature enabled cities and counties to identify urban revitalization areas and set plans that would allow them to defer the, the payment of taxes on improvements that generated increased assessed values on properties. It was, it was really established as a way for stabilizing long-term tax bases through improvements to, improvements through renovations, as well as new construction. The city then sets, or the city, the state then sets the code, sets the limits on what cities have to work within with, when it comes to tax abatement plans. So they set the, the bounds of the box, and then each city establishes its own plan and its own areas and the limitations, like what, what properties are eligible, what abatement schedules will be offered, what the minimum eligibility criteria will be. And also, it allows, many set caps on what the, what the amount of abatement will be, will be, will be limited to. Recent changes to the state code, the state tax, tax code last year impacted the tax abatement plan. One was the, the school district lobbies are now a protected levy. So when it comes to residential abatement, a property that is given residential tax abatements will still pay in the, the school district taxes. So the Des Moines Public Schools, for example, just over $15 per thousand, that's still, that will still be paid in for residential tax abatement that's applied this year. Other changes are in regards to commercial tax abatement. Now, any property that's granted commercial tax abatement has to enter into a minimum assessment agreement, which locks in a minimum that can't be contested. It has to be in place for the duration of the schedule that's awarded. Well, we'll cover more, more details on that later in this presentation. I want to start off with just a review of what we, what we in Des Moines offer for tax abatement. Starting at the top, it's probably the, the most simple and the most widely utilized tax abatement schedule. This is the 10-year, 100% abatement schedule that's available for improvements to any residential property anywhere in the city. This is a very common, a very popular tax abatement schedule, and it's, it's easy to administer, and it's easy for the developers and the homeowners. It's easy for people to understand. Makes it, makes it a very good program. I'm still surprised when we go out and give tax abatement presentations. We go out and we try and educate the realtors and the contractors. We want to make everybody aware that this program exists in Des Moines. And I'm still surprised by the number of people that, that are so surprised that they, when they hear that we offer 100% 10-year tax abatement for improvements to residential properties. So no matter how much outreach we do, we can't do enough when it comes to this program.
Ask you this on the tenure, because I just had this question from a builder asked me over the weekend. Where the, in order to get the 10-year tax abatement, I know there are certain locations. Are those locations identified on the city website?
They are. They're, they're in the, they're in the tax abatement plan that is available on the webpage. And we'll, we'll get more into that as I, as I walk through this. I, a lot of my presentation today is going to be pretty high level. I'm going to take a few deeper dives into a few elements, but just keep in mind that a lot of this is high level overview and some analysis to keep in mind as we move forward with recommendations for updating the plan. Like Scott said, we just kicked off a citywide, a citywide housing strategy, and we plan to use the outcomes from that strategy to help guide what we do with the residential portion of tax abatement as we bring forward more detailed recommendations. Walking down this list, the, the 10-year 100% is also available for new construction of accessory housing units. So ADUs are the, the common, the common acronym, accessible dwelling units. These would be the, the second, that's having a second small residential structure constructed in the backyard of an existing single-family property.
And what's your best guess of how many applicants there have been?
For, for the ADUs?
Yeah.
A handful. We, we don't see many of them built. But things to keep in mind, we're, we're talking a lot about housing affordability. These two, that, that 10-year 100% schedule that's focused on the improvements to our existing housing stock, remember, that housing stock is probably our most affordable housing stock in Des Moines. And we have, we as the city have made a big commitment in investing and supporting the, the continued improvement, the continued reinvestment in those properties. That is, that is our affordable, that's our, we have a great deal of that housing stock, and it is our most affordable, but we need to make sure that it's kept up and make sure that it's maintained. So this is one of those tools that we use to do that. I talk about this plan, it's really focused on tax abatement today. But keep in mind that tax abatement is one of many tools that we have in our toolbox for promoting development in, in the city. So we're going to, I'm going to wrap things up here at the end with a kind of a zoom out. Just keep that in mind that this isn't the only thing that we use, but it's important to, to understand that we, as we work on developing our tools, if we match them to fit the goals that they're intended, that they work well with, then we'll be a lot more effective at what we do. Working down this list, we get into the new construction. So when we talk about new single-family dwellings, the, the plan gets a little more complicated now. We have a targeted low-density residential area, again, isn't, it's in a map in the plan. It covers the, the urban core and surrounding areas, and it offers a higher level of tax abatement, more aggressive schedules for new single-family construction. Now, it's nine-year or 10-year. When we talk about these, these schedules for, for new construction, they're all declining schedules. We've found that having a 100% schedule that suddenly ends on a very large value has a pretty negative impact on property owners. So strategically, we have implemented declining schedules. So it takes three to four years to get to the end of that, of that abatement schedule. The property owners can slowly adjust to paying the, the tax bill, rather than being socked with the entire thing all in one, in one, at one shot. However, these schedules get complex. These are some of the more challenging ones for us to explain when we're out there giving these presentations. You're, when you're talking about building a new home, you're eligible for a five-year schedule, or a six-year schedule, or a nine-year schedule, or a 10-year schedule. It depends on where you're located. And then, once you figure out what area you're in, then it depends on how you're constructing the structure. So I'm going to circle back to this at the end of the presentation with some, some high-level recommendations. But I just want to say that this, this part is where it gets, it gets complex. And with the complexity comes more challenge, and I question the impacts on effectiveness. Of these four, we have the two areas. We have the, the loaded, the targeted low-density area and everywhere else. Targeted low-density is eligible for nine or 10-year. And what makes the difference of nine or 10 is whether or not the, a couple of residential, low-density residential sustainability standards are met. R20 exterior walls and an electric vehicle charging circuit, or the infrastructure for the easy installation of such a circuit. Structures that are built like that are eligible for the, for the additional year of 100% abatement. Same...
Infill lots?
Yeah, the, in the targeted low-density area, yes, they would. The five and six-year schedule is available everywhere else. So you're talking greenfield, and still a lot of, a lot of infill lots on outside of that targeted area, too. Same thing applies. Typical construction eligible for five-year. Do the two sustainability features, you get an extra year of 10-year, 100, or you get an extra one year of 100%.
RD or mostly infill?
Yep.
That you've got here?
Yep. Yeah, for the new, for the new single-family construction.
Okay.
It's, it's a, I don't have the map in this presentation.
That's fine.
But it is on the tax abatement plan, and it covers downtown, areas south of downtown and surrounding, the urban core and surrounding areas.
What do you stand for?
Good question. RF stands for residential full, and RD stands for residential declining. If you go to the Polk County page for, for tax abatement, you'll see it's just a numbered system. And the last time that we, that we did a major overhaul of the tax abatement plan, we decided to change our schedule names to reflect the number of years and the type of schedule that it is. So the 06-RD, six-year residential declining. It, it helps us out in administering the plan. Polk County still has those translated into the numbers that they use, have used for years. As we work our way past new single-family dwellings, now we're getting to the missing middle tax abatement schedule. This was implemented a few years ago, and it has generated a, I think this has been part of what's generated a boost in our buy-attached and townhome construction. This, I like this schedule in the sense that it's one, one standard applied citywide. So if you build this, this housing type anywhere in the city, you're eligible for eight-year or nine-year tax abatement. Again, whether it's eight or nine depends on whether it has R20 exterior walls and the electric vehicle charging circuit. This one, this one is easy to explain. It's, it's easy to administer. More, more simplicity makes it more effective, in my opinion.
Do you have a sense of, have people been using the environmental incentive and building?
Yes, and I have, I'll take a deeper dive into that on a lighter slide. So we'll, we'll get that, we'll get, we'll get to that. As we continue to work our way down, now we're getting into the high-density residential. 13-plus units under any single roof is considered high-density residential. This uses the 10-year declining schedule, and it's only available in our targeted high-density residential area. So this is the urban core and surrounding corridors that feed into the urban core, more commonly known as the spider map.
Cody, would those units be individually owned, or could one entity own the entire building?
So the, the question would be a multi-story, multifamily building that's all condoed, so each individual unit is owned. Yes, it's still considered a, a high-density residential structure, and it's still eligible for the, the multifamily tax abatement. What's that?
It's not an apartment building.
Now, even if it is a, in a condo ownership regime, that, that ownership structure is still eligible for this tax abatement schedule.
Are there other financial incentives offered to the developers of these units in addition to this abatement?
Many, many of our multifamily projects are utilizing a combination of tax abatement and tax increment financing. So because our targeted high-density residential area covers our downtown, which is in the metro center TIF district, we have two tools that are available for those projects.
Just for people watching, that, like, there's a logical disconnect, because you, you can't get TIF if they aren't paying taxes. So they use two tools, but it's not like twice as lucrative.
Yes, it's not, it's not doubling down. So to, to, to cover this, the tax abatement prevents that value from hitting the market. Tax increment financing is based off of additional value that is added to the market. So a project that utilizes, a high-density residential project that utilizes tax abatement doesn't generate any tax increment that can be paid out in, in TIF until it reaches the end of that schedule. So it's usually one, the tax abatement begins, and then there's a period after that where some TIF is available for, for that incentive. Good question. Finally, we have our commercial and industrial schedules. And right now, we have two options, a 10-year declining schedule and a three-year 100%. I mentioned that that changed, the I mentioned that that changed the state tax code where there's a minimum assessment agreement that's now required. There is some risk in that minimum assessment agreement with this 10-year schedule. Because if you have a property that has an existing base, say, an existing building that's being improved, you, in order for that property owner to get tax abatement for those improvements, the property has to enter a minimum assessment agreement, which sets the floor. And it's definitely going to, it's definitely going to at least be what that current value is, what the current assessed value is for that property. So if I'm that owner and I enter, enter into this agreement, I set my base for what my current assessed value is, and I do, I do a project, improve the property, add value, I select the 10-year schedule, now I'm locked in at that value for 10 years. Now, this is a declining schedule. So the value that's added, I'm getting a portion of that abated. But if my, if there's a major disaster, if my property burns down, or floods out, or is destroyed by a tornado on year two, I'm now locked into a minimum assessment under the previous value. So there's some risk here.
I mean, how many properties do we have that flood or are destroyed by fire?
Yeah. It's, yeah. Is it, is it, is it widespread? No. Is it a risk to be aware of, though? It is. And this is, this is where, as we bring forward some changes, these are some of the things that we're going to be considering to try and minimize that level of risk while still making the program effective. All right, I'm consuming a bunch of time here, so I'm going to move on. Are there any questions on these schedules? Okay. Basic eligibility criteria, I've got into the weeds on some of the individual schedules. But for any property to be eligible, the project needs to increase the value by at least 5%. Needs to comply with all code requirements. The new multifamily projects, the 13-plus units, and the commercial projects also need to provide four sustainability criteria. We have an à la carte list in the plan, things like EV charging stations, permeable pavement, onsite electric generate, electricity generation, rooftop photovoltaic panels, that sort of thing. They're able to choose some of those, some of those features to satisfy this, this minimum criteria. The single-family, we've talked about that. The R20 walls and the EV charging circuit that are necessary to be eligible for that additional year. These are some things that likely just need to, need to refresh when we do bring, bring This is the slide that I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Mandelbaum, getting into those. I want to, I want to focus on some of the evaluation that we've done here with the, with the new sustainability criteria for the new single-family and missing-middle residential construction. We've analyzed what numbers we're seeing. Remember, all projects are eligible for abatement, but if they do R20 exterior walls, so better insulated walls and an EV charging circuit, they're eligible for an additional year of hundred percent abatement. What we've seen is of our new single-family homes, only 23% are choosing to install that addition, those additional features to, to receive that additional year of abatement. That's, that seems pretty low in my mind, and that gives me the indication that the market still has more of a driving influence on these features than what our tax abatement plan does. I talk about the complexity, and I think there's another way to approach this, where we can still push to get those features in our, in all of our homes that are receiving abatement in a way that still promotes more construction in the market. Unfortunately, what we see here is those entry-level homes that are being built aren't being provided with the, the sustainability features. But I believe our goal is all, all housing stock in Des Moines starts to receive these, these features, receives the benefit of additional insulation and the options for a, the ease of installation of an EV charging circuit, if that owner wishes to do so.
Go, Joe. Is R20 walls, is that two-by-six instead of two-by-four?
That's, that's what we commonly see, is two-by-six walls. There are other options to do two-by-four walls with a layer of foam insulation.
But the most.
Most, most common is two-by-six walls.
It's two-by-six.
It is, it is.
By removing the EV charging station. I don't think the R.
Yeah, the two-by, right.
Yeah, the R20 walls is not going to be that big of an issue, but what's stopping it is the EV charge.
Well, so.
Yeah, so, so the, so to dive a little deeper into the EV charging, the options are to provide the circuit. So you're talking a, a 40-amp circuit provided to the garage or the parking area.
Just roughed in?
Yeah, roughed in. Or we've given another option where you have the infrastructure in place. So if the builder doesn't want to invest in the, the cost of the breaker and the wiring, we, we will approve this, given there is a raceway, a conduit, an electrical box that connects that, that location in the garage to the electrical panel. So that future owner can have that installed without the cost of having to retrofit and remove sheet rock. The wires can be fished and the, and the breaker can be installed pretty cheaply in that instance.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you know the appropriate cost? I mean, what, what is the estimated cost for, for something like that?
When.
I mean, do we know?
When, when we did this back in '21, it was a few hundred dollars. Scott, you.
Yeah, so the conduit, it sounds like it's just a few hundred dollars if, but I had to pay about $2,500 in a finished home in order to put it all brand-new, and that included the electric.
Okay, okay.
That, that's the whole point of making it EV-ready.
Right.
Is that it's about a tenth of the cost to rough it in and not, not put all the equipment in, but.
Just have it ready to go.
Have it ready to go, and it makes it a lot cheaper later.
And discussing that with my electrician, it was, he said it was $1,500 that could have been saved had it, the conduit just been.
So it's $1,000 for basically to rough it in, and then the two-by-six walls instead of two-by-four, depending on the size of the home is.
Right, right.
Distance. I mean, I don't know what that cost would be now with the.
Yeah. And, and as we move forward with this deeper dive into the, into assessing how effective the plan is, I'll get to this at the end of the presentation.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm hitting high-level concepts at this stage. But, but I'm, I'm getting this out there because these are the things that we're going to be considering as we walk into the next phase of tax abatement. We want to look at, okay, are, is the plan structured in a way that it's achieving the goals? And if not, what adjustments can be made to still make it effective, but do a better job of achieving those goals? I'd like to see our, our residential numbers up here, our single-family residential, look more like our missing middle, what, that has 69% of those structures that are providing the two-by-six walls and providing the EV charging circuit. Quite frankly, I'd like to see them all in orange. So all structures that are receiving tax abatement have these, these features, have the standard set of, of sustainability features that the city, in partnership with our developers, decide can be accomplished and are worthwhile for projects that receive tax abatement.
Now, does any of our suburban community do this also? Do they ask, do they give extra incentive for any of these things, or is any type of requirement, or, you know?
There's, some offer tax abatement.
Yeah.
None that I'm aware of require additional features for their tax abatement.
Okay.
But in a couple of slides here, we're going to, actually, I think it's the next slide, we're going to talk about what, what the others do. Yep.
Getting more affordable housing in the city of Des Moines, we have to offer some flexibility. This number says exactly why, why the number is so low, because of these additional features. If I can go to a suburb with, that has tax abatement, same house, but several thousand dollars difference, I'm going to go to the suburb.
I, I think that's one, that perspective is one component of the consideration.
That's just the way it is.
But, but I think the other component is, what does that, what does it cost, that 77% when they decide they want to go with an electric vehicle?
We're not, but we're talking about building housing in the city of Des Moines that people will buy. We want people to come and live in our city. Once it's built, that's, that's a different issue.
If I, if I could, too, that, the other issue here is the, the cost of building the home, yes, but then utility bills for the owners, the renters thereafter. And so the R20 is, is pretty important, too, for the, the buyers.
And I said, I don't think, I don't think the walls is really that big of an issue. I think most builders are doing that right now. It's the EV charging station that is stopping it.
And, and all of this, any changes that we propose to make?
Yeah.
Will be proposed after we gather feedback from our builders. We're, we're not going to bring forward recommendations from a vacuum.
This, I, I, I think Linda's making good points. My, like, I, I'd just love to talk, and I'm sure you are, talking to a few developers, a house that's $300,000, 100% tax abatement is $5,000. Like, there's, there's other reasons other than financial, they're not, they're not doing it. And I guess eventually, as we dig into this, I'd like more information about that because, I mean, it, we're, we're foregoing, we're saving them $5,000 if they do it, and it doesn't sound like it's costing five grand to burn the.
And.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that's.
At a $300,000 house, I mean, we have houses being built bigger than that, and, and that only increases the incentive that they get to do it. And it probably doesn't raise the cost of doing it.
Right. And, and so just one point, tax abatement, where tax abatement isn't going to solve all of our housing challenges. This is, this is one of many tools and many strategies that has an impact and will be able to move the needle. And nothing that we do in tax abatement is going to solve it all. It's going to take a much, a much more broad, a much more strategic approach that utilizes all of the tools at our disposal for improving housing and achieving our housing goals, as well as other development goals. But just, just keep that in mind as we, as we talk. We can, it's easy to get into the weeds, and we plan to do that at later phases. My goal here today is to talk some high-level elements and introduce some more detailed components of what we're seeing, just as food for thought as we move forward. I do appreciate the comments and welcome the feedback. So this slide identifies what others in the area offer when it, when it comes to residential tax abatement. I, I had to chuckle as I was digging up these numbers because a handful of cities have on their webpages that they have, they offer the most aggressive abatement in the metro area. And as, I guess it was a testament to how challenging portions of ours can be to understand. Because when I look at our, at the Des Moines numbers, our numbers are far and above what anyone else in the metro area is offering for tax abatement. Bondurant also, I didn't get Bondurant on this slide, but they do offer a, a three-year declining schedule for new residential construction. It starts at 75%. You'll notice that Pleasant Hill and, let's see here, what is it? I've got it on my notes. Sorry, Altoona and Norwalk, they have a $75,000 cap that they offer for their residential tax abatement schedules. Many cities in the area offer commercial industrial tax abatement. That seems to be much more, more common and consistent around the area. And then Pleasant Hill has a few properties, a few multifamily properties receiving 10-year hundred percent.
But just to be clear, I mean, what this slide shows, West Des Moines, Urbendale, Johnston, Waukees, I mean, others as well, Carlisle, they, they don't offer any abatement.
That offer zero abatement, correct.
Zero abatement.
Yep.
So I would say to your point, that the Councilman Coleman, there's, there's other issues of why we're not building, why we're not choosing Des Moines, because it's obviously not the incentive for offering the.
Absolutely.
Causing folks to leave the city of Des Moines and not use an area to build in and go to one of the suburbs that doesn't have the incentive to build.
Right.
The same home.
Yep.
So, I mean, I think Councilman Coleman, now, Councilman Mandelbaum has mentioned that, and I think that there's, there's other issues that we've, we've got to address that why happening, and why they're not choosing to stay in our core and go somewhere else.
Yep, there's a multitude of factors.
And just, just.
Why not? I mean, no, but I'm just saying.
And if I could, for clarification, then the number of permits for single-family home construction in Des Moines is increasing. And in fact, we surpassed the 300 new homes built in, in Des Moines this past year. So we are seeing improvement in the building permits of number of new houses, but we also recognize it's a small percentage when you look at the entire metro area. So I would, I would say that we are seeing improvement, but we have a lot further to go to get our fair share, if you will, of, of single-family homes.
But, but we're, we're never going to buy more, you know, incentivize more construction.
No, I don't, I would not say that.
That's not, that.
Correct.
We're, we're not ever going to be able to do that.
Yeah, I would say, yep.
There, there's other underlying issues of why we're going some, folks are going somewhere else.
I can just add, Bondurant provides shovel-ready development for their, for their builders. Where Des Moines, I mean, Joe, you and I have a lot of land.
We do.
In our wards, but the developer has to come in and put in the roads and the infrastructure, which adds thousands and thousands of dollars where Bondurant goes ahead and does it, and then the developer pays a tap-on fee, but, but it's ready, they don't have to, to do that. Is that, do you think that's a fair assessment?
I'm not familiar with the details of what Bondurant does for development.
I can't imagine that that would cover the cost to the city, but just, I, I don't know. I, I would be interested to see how that would work financially.
I think that that's something we can look into more when you.
Yeah, I would, I would really like to see.
Get more analysis so that we can.
That makes sense.
Certainly.
Yeah.
I like getting into the weeds.
Building a $750,000 house, they may not, they shouldn't need X amount more. But that's one way to capture some taxes.
Certainly. As we, as we zoom out and take a look at the, the bigger picture and develop a strategy, that will pull in.
All this.
Everything.
Sure.
Everything that's impacting our, our, our housing stock. And with that, we'll, we'll move on to some, some more of the numbers here. So this is, this graphic represents the total amount of value that was abated in Polk County as of January 1, 2023. Now, the January 1, 2024 numbers will be available later this year. But this shows how Des Moines compares to other cities that offer tax abatement in Polk County. This is everything that's abated. So let me, let me provide a little more, a little more background here. So you notice that there, there's 10-year schedules that we offer and that others offer, too. This is all of the value that's accumulated and is currently being abated in Polk County. So this shows how Des Moines compares to others. This shows the trends in Des Moines over the past 10 years. So the orange line on the, on the bottom shows the amount of value that we have abated each year. Now, again, this is just in Polk County. Most of our development occurs in Polk County, and the Polk County Assessor has this information readily available. So there, there may be some more in Warren.
You know, since, since. I was just going to ask about this, this number, since we include, I mean, do we have a kind of a breakdown in terms of multifamily, single-family residential and commercial?
I love the way you guys are going with this. Good set, good segues to my next slides.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Keep going forward, then, if it's forward.
If you go back as a slide, I know that it's, like, we look at that and we say, oh my God, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money and a lot of growth. But the whole purpose of the abatement program is to incentivize growth so it happens. I mean, I do think we can look at this chart and say, wow, we've been wildly successful in spurring growth. And I, I do think that's a piece of what, what we have to always keep in mind. I mean, there's a purpose for abatement, and it's for that. I mean, there's a purpose for abatement, and it's for that green arrow to go up.
Yep, that, that absolutely means that there, there are projects going on. There's improvements being made that are generating additional assessed value. Now, to break it down by, Councilmember Mandelbaum was asking, how is the abatement being distributed amongst our different classes? This graphic shows each assessment classification and the amount of value that's, that's abated from each, from each one of those. So the residential 3+, that's a, that's an assessment classification. So that's your residential structures that have three or more units. So your, your large homes that have been converted that are now, now have five, five or six units in them, as well as your 36-unit apartments, the condo, the condo buildings, that's what that residential 3+ is. The residential is the low density, so the single-family homes. Mm-hmm. And then commercial, industrial, the agricultural, it's really improvements to residential structures on agriculturally assessed ground. So you could add that into the, the residential category. But this shows the breakdown. This, this shows the commitment that the city of Des Moines has made to improvements to residential properties. It's one, one indicator of, of some of those commitments.
And most of multifamilies.
Yep. Multi, the, the blue and the orange, that's our multifamily and our single-family abatement values.
But the dark blue is essentially the multifamily category.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
That, that's the.
Apartments and.
Apartment buildings downtown and on the corridors, that, those are all.
Yes.
They're, they're essentially all taking abatement first, then tiff on top of it.
So, so that doesn't show just, this isn't just reflecting new construction. This also shows a healthy amount of improvements to existing buildings. So even those, those multifamily buildings that are located outside of that targeted high-density residential area are still eligible to receive abatement for improvements. We wanna make sure that those structures are still maintained, there's still investment being made in the, the apartments that are on the periphery of town, and they're eligible to receive abatement as well. So they, they fall into that category.
Okay.
So many of the new, many of the new multifamily buildings are, are receiving a combination of tax abatement and, and some tax increment financing. I don't have the specific numbers to that, to that level, but that's something that we could, we could dig up.
Talk about shovel-ready, I was talking about commercial, that, the bottom line there. Do you know what our commercial tax abatement is compared to the suburbs' commercial? The, those that offer tax abatement to commercial properties in the suburbs, what's the difference? Because that's, that's where we get into shovel-ready.
Um, so, commercial abatement is offered, many offer the 3-year 100% schedule that we also offer. There are also the, some that offer a five-year declining schedule that starts at 75%. We offer the 10, the, the 3-year 100% and the 10-year declining. As far as the numbers go, if we back up, could, we, we could, we could break this down. Yeah. This, these numbers could be further broken down into the amount of commercial abatement that's awarded in other communities. We, we need to go, go back through those numbers from Polk County. And then we'll take another step, go a little, one step deeper into residential. So this graphic shows that as of January 1, 2023, we had over 9,000 residential dwelling units that were receiving tax abatement of some sort. And this breaks the, breaks those numbers down into the types of structures. So the, the chart on the left shows one, two, one and two-family dwellings and townhouses. The blue and the orange shows the difference between the numbers of units receiving abatement for improvements to those units versus the number of units that are receiving abatement for new construction. Same thing on the, the, the chart on the right that shows the breakdown for multifamily. This is, this is numbers of units, not the actual values.
What's the timeframe on these numbers?
So this is as of January 1, 2023. So the way the abatement program works is the deadline for all of the value that's assessed as of January 1, 2024, so this current, current assessment year.
Okay.
Those applications are due February 1 of 2024. So you have until after the close of business that year, and then it works through the process.
Who's ever at that time was getting abatement, whether it was year 1 or year 10?
Yes, yep. So this, this would cover abatement that's been awarded over the past 10 years. Any other questions on the residential abatement? All right, we're coming, we're coming to, coming close to the finish line here. I've been talking about a lot of this stuff throughout my presentation, but just some things to consider as we move forward. Our urban revitalization plan, it needs to evolve. If, if it remains static, it's going to become less effective as market conditions change. It does come with budget impacts. Those, those need to be considered. But this is one way that the city invests in development in Des Moines and improvements to our neighborhoods. We plan to use the citywide housing strategy as one of our guiding documents to provide recommendation in how we move forward with things like tax abatement. Now, it's important to remember that this is just one tool. We have many in the toolbox, and we've got to, we've got to utilize those tools for what they're most appropriate to be used for. Our sustainability criteria, they're, they can be effective, but we need to make sure that we're balancing those with what the market will, will take. And we need to be looking at how, how effective they have been and what adjustments we can make to make them more effective to achieve the goals that we're really trying to hit. And then I've been hitting on this the entire presentation, but the complexity, the more complex we make this plan, the more challenging it is to administer, and I would argue that the less effective it becomes. So there's, there is benefit that comes from simplicity. Next steps, we do need to identify what the city council's goals are for where we go with our urban revitalization or our tax abatement plan. We need to conduct further impact analysis of how well our plan is performing. We need to finish our citywide housing strategy, because there's gonna be some good information that comes out of that that we will use to bring forward more detailed recommendations. But before we do that, we need to engage our stakeholders. We need to identify the direction that we want to go, need to hit some of these high level, high-level items, and then use that direction to guide the more detailed discussions with the stakeholders and those that are gonna be able to help us identify what can be done and what impacts it will possibly have. And from there, we'll bring back an update to this plan for city council consideration.
Do you have a timeframe?
Time, timeframe's not on the slide. I would anticipate early next year, first quarter of 2025, having more detailed discussions on this.
Of the stakeholders you're gonna engage with, or how, how's that gonna work?
Not, not at this point, but really those that develop in Des Moines and those that we would like to develop in Des Moines.
There you go.
Will be our stakeholders. As well as the residents of Des Moines, the neighborhoods.
Right.
Those that are impacted by what goes on.
Okay. You'll get us a list of kind of the stakeholders before.
Certainly.
This kind of all kicks off.
Mm-hmm.
We'll put, before we get, I think the housing strategy is the first thing, then we can get all the other things going at the same time.
Yep.
So, and then bring back.
The housing strategy is, I would also say that long-term success, the reimagined DART and the work on transit is important as well. And if we're gonna have a strong transit or a successful abatement program, they probably need to be tied together.
So with that, will, anything else, or if not, we, we can be in at 4 o'clock for a closed session, and then our regular meeting be at 5:00. So.
All right. Thank you.
Everybody back up for.